Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Washington County Board of Education's work session on the Educational Facilities Master Plan. This is the document that guides our facilities planning for the next year and then tries to project, of course, into the future where we'll be headed. It's also is the document that guides our capital improvement budget and a number of other documents that flow through the board throughout the year. So, our look at this document is really the beginning of a process, not the end. And in that spirit, what I'd like to do is turn it over to the staff to present their recommendation for the Facilities Master Plan. I'd then like to, as a board, have an opportunity for questions and any discussion. And as that, those questions and discussions evolve, we'll sort of keep a list of questions that if people brought out and see what consensus there might be to give any direction to the staff towards the end of our discussion here. This will come up for the board to consider at our business meeting on June 3rd. So, we have some time between now and when it needs to get to the state, which is, I think, July 1st, to make any changes or to provide any additional direction to staff. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wilcox.
And I'll be brief and echo the comments that our board president has laid out and introduced. The two staff members will carry the bulk of this presentation. Dr. Michaels and Chad Criswell will walk you through this process. You're familiar with both of them, but they have spent countless hours in developing this. They brought together a number of sources that you can see in the beginning of Chapter 1 to kind of inform the process of this. So, with that, Dr. Michaels.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. Good afternoon, Dr. Harding's members of the board. As Dr. Hardings indicated, we're here today to share staff's draft recommendations to the board regarding our facilities outlook for the next 10 years. As this board is aware, they've seen similar documents in the past, and every year we make it very clear, it's a very fluid process, the process that could change from year to year. If you look at a plan from two or three years ago, it might look very different than it does now in the out-years, even though we do plan out for 10 years. As you look through the document, in the past, we've kind of made a little arrow chart and a flow chart. Everything builds up to Chapter 5. So, our community outlook, we look at the various communities, we look at the high school, the middle school, the feeder elementary schools, the pattern of development within those areas. We look at the inventory, in other words, from a facility standpoint, what shape is the roof in, the boiler, the chiller, the floor, the walls. Mark Mills and his staff do a thorough assessment of all of our buildings every year. As was shared at the last board meeting, enrollment projections are a big part of this process because we're continuously looking for how can we best serve the facility needs for our students. And we're watching for things like pre-K enrollment growth areas, areas that might be declining in growth and how that might affect the availability of resources. Board policy drives some of this, as well as COMAR and other state regulations. So, this is our 10-year program. The main, again, after our first four chapters, it all culminates in Chapter 5. And right now, we'd like to just walk through these various projects. We'll share a little bit more detail in a minute. As you're all aware, we're currently under construction at Bester. The school is very close to being complete. The moving of the boxes, I think they moved 611 boxes between Friday and Monday. This Friday, we make another move. The following Thursday, Friday, we make another move. And then I think that puts us where school will be closed. Bester will close one day, one half-day early this year. And over those next couple of days, following that, June 11th, 12th, kind of in that time period, we'll move the remainder of the items and move a lot of the remaining furniture and things to various schools that might need it. And the school's in very good shape. We do have a few things to finish up there, but we're very close to occupancy at this point. New West City Elementary, we requested $6.1 million of construction money, and so far, that's been approved at the state level for this first installment. The 100% CDs are available to the board members. We place those in the board office, and they've also are available to the Design Review Committee. And a recommendation will be made to the county commissioners on June 3rd, to the best of our knowledge, regarding that project. 701 Frederick Street, we'll talk about here in just a second, but we have some planning, construction, and opening of that in the next fiscal year. We have a high school capacity project, which is, was the desire of this board last year, that we include kind of a yet-to-be-named high school capacity project, might be multiple projects. So, we placed that two places in this chart. You can see some planning efforts in FY '16 and '17, as well as out-years and like FY[354.22][354.22]'21, '22, more for placeholders than anything else. Those things could really move around substantially. And as you're aware, of elementary or middle schools, we need to start paying some attention to those. And again, we included an elementary school capacity project, just as kind of a placeholder. Sebastian Elementary, again, we open this fall in August. We're on schedule, we're within budget, and things are moving along very nicely. The picture on the left is that archway that came from the former junior high there. South Potomac Street and Junior High, and now current Bester, and soon to be a demolished building, but we did preserve various portions of the building in that Main Street hallway there outside the library. And you can see the entrance way, the main entrance way is the picture on the right. High school capacity projects, again, as we look at our high schools, we can anticipate a substantial amount of growth in high schools, as some of our large elementary classes are moving forward. In the projection information that Chad shared with you last couple of weeks ago, we have some smaller kindergarten classes coming in right now because of lower birth rates, but we have some other groups that are going to age through our system and create some pressure at the high school level. So, it's something we're certainly watching, and we have a variety of ways we might take care of that. Our 701 Frederick Street conversion is a concept that Dr. Wilcox has shared a little bit about, and we're in the process of hiring an architect to review some possible plans there for a service academy that might involve a couple of our programs currently at Washington County Technical High School, as well as maybe some new programs. And we anticipate maybe this would be complete by first semester of the next upcoming school year, so January of 2015. Other boutique-type schools might help with enrollment capacity, maybe in Hagerstown or around the county, as well as an academic hub that I believe Dr. Wilcox is going to specifically address later on this evening. So, obviously, all these projects are pending some funding, availability, planning, requirements, approval, and the types of things we traditionally do with any school capacity project. West City, again, a replacement school for Conneca Jig and Winter Street, two of our lowest scoring on our facilities inventory. Bester's our other lowest-scoring facility. So, please report when we replace, or when we build West City, that will replace our three lowest-scoring facilities. They're identified in Chapter 3. Again, we did receive full funding for our first request in FY '15. As the board's aware, we'll continue to ask for funding from the state until that's complete. We anticipate getting the next largest chunk in FY '16 and the last in FY '17. Three-round school capacity, Chad, 471.
471.
And again, we're proposing this school to open, and so far, we're on schedule for August of 2016. Sharpsburg Elementary School, with replacement of Winter Street, Conneca Jig, and Bester, it will then become our lowest-assessed school based on current conditions, and we're looking forward to replacing that school. We're exploring site options right now. We anticipate we'll replace it with a three-round school, which will add additional capacity in the South County area, which is needed to address some issues at Boonsboro Elementary, Pleasant Valley, and currently Sharpsburg. So, this school will do that, as well as provide additional seats for future growth in that area. Right now, we're anticipate the way as we're planning approval in FY '17, and the school would open in August of '19. Some other projects that were listed up there for Chapter 5, again, all of our middle schools were built pretty much in the '70s, with the exception of Hicks', and we're going to start to address some of those because we're starting to approach that 40-plus-year time period. And most of those schools, again, with the exception of Hicks, were built, and Hancock Middle School were built with that open-school concept, and we've done a lot of makeshift work, and we'd like to really address those as we renovate those schools over a period of years in the future. E. Russell Hicks, we've done a number of systemic projects there. We wouldn't anticipate a full renovation of the school, but we would anticipate a significant renovation of the school in the out-years. And then, again, you can see our high school capacity project, elementary capacity project as requested last year by the board, and we kind of include some placeholders for some potential projects. As far as systemic projects, our focus is going to be, with the limitation of systemic matching money from the local level, we're going to concentrate on roof, boiler, chiller replacements, so that our schools remain dry, warm when they're supposed to be warm and cool when they need to be cool. So, you'll see these types of projects moving forward from a systemic standpoint. And with that, we wanted to provide time today really to respond to your questions and to seek your input, and I believe you have the draft document available to you. It's also available online at Word Docs and also on our website for the public, and we'd be glad to answer any questions. Dr. Harding's?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Questions or discussion from the board? Mrs. Bright?
I was waiting to see. I'll just start, and then somebody jump in and cut me off. Go back around, be sure everyone has a chance. Chapter 1, Page 2, under Safe Routes to Schools and Active Community Environments, under the Transportation Policies. The statement is made that, at this time, a specific safe routes to schools policy has not been developed by Washington County or WCPS. Is that a recommendation that staff would like to see us write such a policy? And if so, and Mrs. Fisher's going to throw something at me. If so, is there a model, or is there something that we can start that through the process, if that's helpful?
I think it probably could be helpful. There's a couple, when we talk about safe route to schools, there's safe route to schools grants that actually help with sidewalk projects and things like that to help students get the schools safely. We've applied for those in the past and worked with the county and city to do things like sidewalks and crossing areas and things like that. Something specific about roadways and things like that's certainly not going to be harmful to have. Chad, I don't know if you had any?
No, I think that's a pretty good answer. I know we've worked with the county and our transportation department. I think it's pretty much primarily headed that up to find out where some of the needs are, but it certainly wouldn't hurt to investigate.
So, if we had such a policy in place, it might support you in seeking some dollars somewhere, I think is what I heard you say.
Probably won't help us secure additional dollars. It's one of the questions, I think, that's asked as part of this process, again, because they're trying to encourage people to walk to school. As we work with public school construction folks in the IAC, they're looking for schools to be built in areas where children can walk. So, that's why it's an important part of the process.
Because I noticed under A, on Page 3, you list out three items that evidently you use to look at. So, we're sort of almost already doing this, but it seems like a policy may give it more authority or something. So, just a suggestion. Walkable communities, and you know, we talked about obesity being such a major issue and Hagerstown and the country in general, so maybe this could be wrapped around some other initiatives as well. So, I just, and on Page 2, back to Page 2, under Regular Classroom Teachers, when you shift from elementary to secondary, sort of midway in that page, am I misunderstanding that ratio for grade 6 to 12?
I think it's the difference in how we, Chad secures that information from Matt Simler and from Rick Akers. I think it's just in the difference of how we look at elementary. In elementary, we're looking at classroom teachers. Often, they don't factor in the encore teachers that would help reduce that ratio. So, we look at, you know, 5th grade divided, you know, five ways. It's, we had 105 children there, we divided by five, we come up with 21 children per teacher. Yet, there's a whole bunch of other teachers that also helped to teach those children, and that would reduce that number. So, I think when they look at elementary, I think they think about classroom teachers. In secondary, they almost always factor in all the teachers, factor out the planning time, and that's why that number looks different, special ed, other things like that.
So, in the high school, it's an 18 to 1?
When you take all the teachers divided by the number of students.
Okay. Just-
Mrs. Brightman?
Yes.
I think it's an average. I mean, and that's the thing. I mean, you're going to have 31 in an Algebra I class, and you're going to have six in a Jewelry I class. But then what you'll often have is, probably a better example would be a Spanish class. You might have Spanish I and II combined into one class, because there aren't enough Spanish II kids. Probably a better example would be Spanish III. So, you might have three kids that go on to take a third year of Spanish, you put them in, and so you create funny numbers, averages, if you will, through all of this process.
We just had always thought that our elementary was a much lower K through 3 or K through 2, and once you got to secondary, it was 25 or 27.
It's just a-
This just-
It's just a product of advisory.
Okay. Just in a big, broad, holistic approach, we have asked staff to sort of look at high schools, and I know you've mentioned a lot of sort of creative ways. We're heading to boutique high schools and reuse some different buildings, but I hesitate to go here, but I'm going to go here. When you talk in here of clustering and looking at feeder school patterns, I assume that's what you kind of mean when you say school clustering and how we look at how we fill certain schools, and we're doing it all by high school district at this point. And then we have Vispa and Tech, which are sort of a separate issue because they feed from all over the county. Is there any chance, when you were looking at this in a quiet or in a brainstorming, that you looked at any different way of clustering or doing feeder schools? And as we look at 21st century instruction and nonlinear instruction and different ways, isn't there an opportunity to sort of throw the doors open and just look at a different way of arranging our clusters in schools?
I don't, I don't think anything would prevent us from doing that. I think the reason it's in clusters right now is built more around the community analysis that's required by the state. So, look at the Hagerstown District and, you know, basically divides in the north and south high, and then into some other pieces of Hagerstown to go to other schools. It's part of the community analysis, excuse me, that's required by the state that we look at. Not a concept that these schools have to stay clustered together. You can divide them up any way you want to divide them up, but right now, I think, Chad, we're just building this document based on communities surrounded by the high school as the identifier. It doesn't drive the rest of the document, doesn't require us to have Boonsboro Middle School feed into Boonsboro High School, if that's not the desire of the board or anything at all like that.
I mean, there's some obvious clustering, but there's some that are sort of out there.
There's nothing that restricts, just in the way that's been described. It's just a community description. It's just some means to break down the county into parts and look at it as parts. It's required to have a community analysis from the state.
That's how.
Marijuana Department of Planning.
But it is not driving instructionally how things could be clustered in any way.
Mrs. Harshman, did you have a question?
Yes. Back to the teacher-staff ratio for a minute. You mentioned encore being included as part of the teaching staff, but they do not have the students, they have the students alone. So, the teacher's classroom still has the same number of students in at any one time, and then those students are pulled to go to encore, which would be a planning time for the teacher. Is that correct?
Well, as Dr. Wilcox described, I think it's just the difference in the math. This information came from the instructional department. So, again, to go back to the example of 105 students are in my 5th grade, at my 5th grade at school. I have five teachers. When I divide that by the five 5th grade teachers, that's 21 to 1.
But that would be classroom teachers, not including encore.
Classroom teachers, right. So, when we go to the secondary number, I believe it's calculated using all teachers, as Dr. Wilcox described, and all classes. So, that's why we're using two different math ratios.
Why would we do that?
It's the numbers we receive from instruction. It's not right or wrong, it's just different. And it's how we've always described classrooms at elementary.
But if you have 30 students in your class, you have 30 students in your class, even if the next period they get up and go somewhere else, you still had 30 students. So, it was not a matter of like 21 to 1 or whatever, correct?
Correct. We're talking about averages and ratios.
Okay. All right. And the other one was the transportation. Do we have the number of walkers in Washington County currently?
We do have a number of eligible walkers and eligible bus riders. I don't have it off the top of my head, and I don't know if we have it built into this document anywhere specifically.
Okay. I didn't see it, but then, you know, don't always catch that. Okay. Could I get that sometime?
Those that are eligible to walk and those that actually walk are two different things.
Right. Absolutely.
And likewise with riders.
So, I think eligible was what I was curious to know. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Bill?
Boyd, very quick one, back to the Instructional Division. Guidance counselors included as part of the staffing and determining ratio?
They're not in those ratios, no.
They're not in the rate?
Elementary or secondary.
My annual comment regarding middle schools, seems every year I make the same comment. Dr. Michael, Western Heights has had a fair amount of upgrading and change since the alternative school left there, has it not?
Correct.
Do you have a virtual instructional program there that required modernization? Where in the building can it be changed? Where can you do any more?
Well, I think as you look at Western Heights, we did some makeshift work there probably 15 years ago. If you look down their hallways, you'll see a locker sticking partway out into the hallway. If you go inside that classroom, you'll see the other half of the locker sticking inside the classroom. When that building was originally built, they had rolling lockers. As a makeshift effort, kind of on the fly with very low budget, walls were created in that school, and the walls were just built up over top of these movable lockers. Wheels were removed, dropped to the ground, and built in that way. The type of renovation that's required there is really a better use of space because it was designed as an open school, and this makeshift effort to create the walls, it would probably be, we would go in and just better design how real walls be built, more soundproof, better flow of traffic, those types of things. Also, look at, you know, condition of sprinklers, roof, HVAC, those types of things.
But it probably would not create additional seat capacity?
Probably not. We've created additional seat capacity by the renovation in the lower level because we lowered Western Heights state rate of capacity when Antietam Academy was there. Now, we've kind of re-altered that space because there is music room and some other rooms that were designed downstairs in addition to the virtual lab.
In conjunction with the middle school, Western Heights, I believe, was opened in 1975, and E. Russell Hicks in the early '60s, or maybe mid-'60s. Do we have any source of information regarding development in the area of the Sharpsburg Pike? You know, at one time, there was to be a Walmart go in there and to be expanded considerably.
I think that plan is still moving forward. Our concern, if you look at E. Russell Hicks and South High, because of the Sharpsburg Pike area, we're predicting a substantial amount of growth there. We're holding our numbers at Hicks. If you look at the projected growth there at Hicks, we have a pretty substantial amount of growth, but we think that's going to level off a little bit and not be quite as bad as it appears to be right now. We did add two portables there mid-year this year, so they now have four portables. But at some point, we're probably going to have to look at some redistricting for South High and E. Russell Hicks.
Thank you.
Mrs. Williams, and we'll go down the, down the line.
Okay. Thanks. I have some questions with regard to the conversion at 701 Frederick Street. I don't know that I've been in that building since it served the community as a Safeway store, so I'm really curious to know what's going to happen there in terms of renovations. I know we've set aside in the budget like $500,000, so if you could just kind of help me understand what's going to be involved in that.
Right. Right now, the tentative plan is to create four fairly large classrooms. I don't know if I want to defer to Dr. Wilcox, but we've roughed out some ideas. Right now, particularly our Police Academy is a tech high. It's currently in what was the old health occupations room, which I think before that was maybe the dental lab or something. Mark, you probably use back to your day when you were a student there. I can't remember what that space was way back, but it's not inadequate facilities in any way. So, our goal there is to create two classrooms for the Police Academy, which is growing substantially, as well as kind of an activity, weight room, I don't want to call it a wrestling area, but a takedown area, conditioning area, which is very important to the Police Academy. Probably move the Fire and Rescue Academy there, which is currently in a portable at South High. Again, not adequate facilities for the types of training and things that they do. They have to go off-site to do some things. So, we see some opportunities there, and then maybe an additional program or two. So, right now, we're planning on with minimum construction, remove some walls, add some walls. We'll have to check on some code issues. The building is sprinkled, sprinkled, sprinkled. The building's fairly open, and most of the walls that are up are drywall and would be easily removed. So, that's kind of our tentative plan. We're just in the process of handing that off to an architect. In the next several weeks, we'll select an architect and then hopefully move forward some drawings for that and then determine our construction this fall for that area. Expect it to be fairly minimal.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams, could I ask a question regarding that?
Oh, please.
Is there, is there adequate space behind that building if you shouldn't want to build a additional classroom or small gym type?
I think there's potential there. Right now, as we've talked to the instructors, they probably would use that outside area also for conditioning, some things like that. We're probably, we have a small building behind there. We'd probably like to maintain for the maintenance department right now. We keep fertilizer in one of the trucks and things inside that area, but it certainly wouldn't be an impossibility to add on to that building, depending upon size of the building and sewer and water runoff, water, stormwater management issues. But it will have, in our design right now, it's about a 2,300-square-foot area that will have dedicated to fitness, so a substantial area.
Mrs. Harshman, then over here, and then back to Mrs. Bright. Is it? Is that okay?
Okay. I just had two quick questions. One is, you mentioned the portables. Are all the portables equipped with restroom facilities now, or do we still have some that the kids have to leave?
We only have one portable in the system that has a restroom in it that I'm aware of. So, you'd have to re-enter the building from all of our portables to use the restroom. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. The other one was with the virtual high school located at Western Heights, where we, do we have any plans to pull that out of there and relocate it, which would also free up space for Western Heights?
I don't think we have any immediate plans to do that, but again, that would be in the range of possibilities down the road if there was need for space.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
Is there any chance that if we move the Police Academy and Fire and Rescue Academy to Frederick Street, that those programs can be at least somewhat enlarged?
Yes. I think that's part of why we're doing that. We're allowing for potential growth.
I ask that because I recently had a discussion with a gentleman who's been involved with fire departments of West Coast Light and works some with the Fire and Rescue Academy as a volunteer, I believe. And he was indicating that this program is saving the county a lot of money because we're training more and more volunteers. we're training more and more volunteers, and if you read the paper, of course, there's a lot of issues with fire companies and having to hire more fire, especially fire workers.
Ms. Fisher, can you pull the microphone over so that everybody can hear?
If we could enlarge that, if there was the need, enough students interested, if we could enlarge that, it would certainly help the county even more.
Right, right now, it's a half-day program, I believe, from one to four, and students come from a variety of schools. So we could double the program just by having dedicated space to it.
Ms. Bright?
Sort of back to South High, it certainly seems to be one of our most challenged high schools at this point as far as enrollment. And help me, we're going to go down memory lane. Back in the late eighties, early nineties, we did a renovation of South High, and phase two of that, I think, was supposed to be seven or eight additional classrooms that were, I think, and this is switching from facilities to program, but I think were going to be used for career technology, agriculture, that sort of thing. And I'm curious, one, why phase two never happened? I'm assuming it's money. But two, is there any way of dusting off some of those plans and looking at that again and seeing, or has Antietam Academy taken up some of the space in that whole cluster there?
I'd have to defer to somebody else. I'm not aware of a phase two for South High, but that was a little bit before my time on this side of the house. The challenge at South High that I see when I'm in the building and students are there is just the corridor space compared to many other corridors, particularly up in what I refer to as C-Wing, I think maybe still called C-Wing, but up with Science and English kind of merged together, they just have a gigantic traffic jam there. The portables out back, I believe we have ten portables there, Chad, twelve counting the other two?
Yes.
So as students enter the building, it creates a substantial flow. Now, could a six-pack or eight-pack be added on to there in lieu of the portables? You wouldn't have any more children there, but we also really wouldn't be creating additional space. I'd have to go back and look at something.
I just had one of the instructors that was working there at the time said that there used to be a section of the school that was demoed, that was used for ag and some other.
That part's true, but that area was never.
Then phase two was, those would be reconstructed, so maybe.
That would be where the bus stop is and the back of the bleacher area and things.
Does that ring a bell with anyone?
And horticulture.
Yeah, that's where the garage was and horticulture and a couple of other things.
And they were saying they were going to get another section, so I don't know whatever happened to that.
I don't remember that, I remember that, you know, the garage, obviously, the auto mechanic and that stuff ended up at Tech High. As did, I think, the agriculture even ended up, I'm not sure what happened there, might have even disappeared.
And I guess coupled with that is, have we ever thought about, I know Tech High's a junior, senior high school, have we ever thought of bringing children into Tech High in ninth through tenth grade?
Been a little discussion about that, inserting would be a possibility. It would take a substantial construction project, but I think it'd be possible. Maybe on both ends of Tech High, or particularly towards the Oak Ridge roadside of Tech High, build a two-story, maybe classroom wing or something out that way. That might be another way to think about how we deal with enrollment.
Just thinking through that conversation, there seemed like there might be a plan.
We'll look for a phase two of South High, I think that would have been in design.
And I'm calling it phase two for lack of any other terminology, but that was.
I would know about that, but it's possible I would not, and it would be somehow roughed out, it probably didn't make it beyond, you know, DD stage, but it should have been roughed out if that was actually planned, and there should have been some infrastructure planned, and I'm not aware of any of that that occurred.
And then just continuing on chapter two, page four, where you talk about funding and maximizing state funding and maximizing local or county funding. What I, and you sort of touch on the idea of maximizing, and I'll use that word again, developer funding, and with a lot of the alternative funding that is going to be studied over the summer and reported out, and some, I think, movement in the home construction economy locally in certain areas of the county and South County. Should we get into more detail here on this community analysis as to how to maximize and whether we would have priorities to maximize the developer contribution, and whether we would prioritize land or money, or actually have them help construct or do an addition on? I know at one point, we talked about Boonsborough Elementary having a, you call it an eight-pack or a six-pack addition for about, what, seven million, was it?
Right, we studied that a little bit, and the reality there, short of another entrance into the campus, that would not be our recommendation, just based on congestion right now.
What about a six or eight-pack at Sharpsburg, an addition at Sharpsburg?
With the condition of the current Sharpsburg building and the limited site, we would not recommend an addition over renovation, now with the, or, excuse me, replacement school. With the replacement school, we are adding a substantial amount of capacity. Current state rate of capacity of Sharpsburg, you said, two fifty-two, and we're gone to four seventy-one. So two hundred and nineteen seats. We're also allowing, in our projections by two thousand eighteen, we're allowing for a hundred and fifty-five homes to be built in the Boonsborough area, and to make our state funding all work out, we need about a hundred and eighty-eight homes built in the Westfield development because it's an adjoining district, just the way the state formula works out. So we're anticipating, we need a substantial amount of growth to justify our funding request. And we're seeing that in our projections, so we're recommending that in our projections.
So even, let's say magically, some land appeared, some way or some way of expanding Sharpsburg on the existing plot of land, you're telling me that the core, I'm trying to get to a renovation, have you looked at renovating Sharpsburg, how you might renovate the core area of the school and an addition added to it?
We believe that would be substantially more costly to renovate. It's actually cheaper, when we do the state formula and our requests to the state per square foot, they'll actually give us the same amount per square foot to renovate minus site work, as they will for completely constructing a new school, just based on, they know the cost of renovate is pretty much equal with the cost of new construction.
Because I know other counties in Maryland are looking at renovations, and I know you and I've had this discussion for six or seven years about renovation versus new construction. And I hear you, but there's a part of me that thinks, why isn't renovation, why can't it be cost-effective? I mean, it seems like the land's there, utilities are there, so that, you know, it's not like going out and buying a new piece of land like West City and building a new, I mean, you've already have infrastructure there.
Right, but you're probably adding sewer capacity, water capacity, electrical capacity, those types of things. You need to have parking spaces, all those types of things as you enlarge the school. You're restricted, and I think that's one of the problems with South High, because it was a renovation. Now, part of the renovation was pretty much, it was gutted ceiling to floor.
Yeah.
But I think one of the challenges to South High, and why I don't think it was planned to have a second phase, was they limited the cafeteria, limited the gymnasium, limited the auditorium by maintaining the current space. Actually, the cafeteria was reduced in size. So those things have, when you work on a renovation, it does provide some limitations. Western Heights, we're planning on a renovation, we're not planning on a replacement school for Western Heights. E. Russell Hicks would be a renovation. So I think where you have the core of the building is such that you could renovate, it makes sense. Part of Sharpsburg is nineteen thirty-six or something like that. You know, so we're just getting into some old part of the building that, and the building sets right out on the road, just be a variety of things we could do a lot better if we build it differently.
Because the ten-year enrollment projection for Sharpsburg, I think, is seven students, so plus seven.
Right, so I think what would have to happen is we build, you know, when we look at it, we're just drawing a bubble around the existing properties to Sharpsburg. So we have to take all the connecting schools, we make our recommendation to the state, and say, here's what we expect to grow in all the connecting schools to Sharpsburg. And then you justify your request of state funding and support based on that enrollment growth.
I've got some others, but I don't want to pause the mic.
I've got a few, but go ahead.
I'll, I guess I'll sort of broaden that question, which is, you've talked about the requirements for state funding, and Sharpsburg and taking the bubble. I presume you've done that if you put your bubble at Boonsborough instead of at Sharpsburg?
That's correct.
Tell us, tell us what that analysis looks like, and more broadly, tell us why your recommendation to the board right now is to put a school, to work on a school in Sharpsburg before you recommend putting a new school in the Boonsborough area.
Well, right now, we.
Help me to understand why that's your recommendation.
And Chad, jump in and help this conversation. Obviously, we have Sharpsburg over capacity right now, it's been over capacity, and we project it will continue to be over capacity. As Mrs. Brightman pointed out, we don't anticipate Sharpsburg itself or its current district to grow substantially based on limitations of sewer and water and the types of things that require that. We have a little overage at Pleasant Valley, we obviously have overage overcrowding at Boonsborough Elementary. We have seat capacity as we look on towards Rockland Woods and Fountain Rock. So when we look at that bubble, we have to consider that. If we build a school in Sharpsburg, right away, we have two hundred and fifty-plus children, you have the overcapacity at Boonsborough Elementary. So we have to work that into the mix. We are projected growth, not only for that area, but for like an area like Westfield's, and we pull all that together. So we do have choices. We could choose to do what staff's recommending, like a remodel, excuse me, new school, a replacement school for Sharpsburg Elementary at a larger capacity based on the surrounding numbers. We believe we'd receive maximum state funding, even to the point of an expanded core that the state would pay for, much like we have set up for West City. If we could secure enough property, there's potential for that someday to be a four-round or a five-round school, if there was ever the need to do that. Right now, we're planning as a three-round school with core capacity to expand if necessary. We could choose, you could choose, to not do that in Sharpsburg, and you'd have two other options to immediately do. You could close Sharpsburg, we could take that same analysis of the number of children at Sharpsburg and the surrounding areas, and the growth, and expected housing growth that we expect, and you could build South County. To do that, to justify that, and to maximize one of what we've kind of felt as a directive to maximize or to limit local contribution, would be to close Sharpsburg. A third option, obviously, would be to do both, go ahead and build South County and build Sharpsburg. The challenge with that is, we have, we're providing seat capacity, you know, almost double the seat capacity if we build two, three-round schools. Even if we built Sharpsburg, it is two-round school, a couple of things happen when we do that. We continue to fund a very small school, which is much more expensive than some of our larger schools, but we still end up with excess seat capacity. As you have excess seat capacity, the cost shifts to the local. Right now, it would require an additional almost twenty million dollars to do both schools at once, because we can justify one or the other, but when we do both, we just can't do that. If we did nothing to Sharpsburg, nothing to Sharpsburg, and made South County our priority, because we still have the seat capacity of Sharpsburg, right away out of your mix comes two hundred and fifty-two children, that shifts to the local side to pay for. So it's a, it's a pretty.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean when you say that. So Sharpsburg has a capacity of two hundred and fifty-two students, it's got slightly over that now, two hundred and eighty-six, it's actually projected to decline over the next five or six years. So if I understood what you're saying correctly, if we did nothing to Sharpsburg in order to justify, in order to get maximum state funding for a South County school, whether it's in Boonsborough or someplace else, somehow those Sharpsburg kids count against us? I don't understand.
They do in the formula, in the sense that as we look at Sharpsburg, let's say we're building the exact same size school, whether it's Sharpsburg or South County.
Yeah.
As we start with Sharpsburg, we start right out of the blocks with two hundred and fifty-two or whatever the real enrollment is there.
Two hundred and fifty-two kids who are already in school?
Already there, already justified. I mean, if we replace it with a two hundred and fifty-seat school, the state right now would probably fully support it, just based on its age and condition. No additional students, not as a four hundred and seventy-one round school, but as a two hundred and fifty-two. So as Sharpsburg's, as you're replacing Sharpsburg, the two hundred and fifty-two count towards the state total right away. You don't need additional students, they already exist, the bodies are there. When you go to South County, if you close Sharpsburg, kids pick up.
I understand that, if you close Sharpsburg, then you can count the two hundred and fifty-two students at Sharpsburg towards your justify needing the capacity in South County.
Correct.
I get that. Let's say we leave Sharpsburg alone.
Correct.
Sharpsburg stays, no renovation, no anything, we just leave it as it is, and we keep putting Band-Aids and whatever else on the school to make sure that it continues to function. To justify the South County school then, we would have to show enough additional students to fill that new school within seven years of the date that we start construction.
The date that the school actually opens, I believe.
Oh, the open date.
So, so within seven, no, it's from, it's seven years from the day that you break ground, that's what's in this document.
The last of the construction bills being paid in close out of project.
It's actually seven years from, the seventh year projection from the first construction funding request. When we go to the state, when our construction, like we did this year for West City, that's when they look at the seventh year projection.
That's when the clock starts.
We're locked in.
Okay, so, again, back to my scenario, we're leaving, if we leave Sharpsburg completely alone, we could get enough state, we could get full state participation for a South County school if we could show that in a seven-year projection in South, in South County and just adjacent attendance zones, there was enough growth to fill that school within seven years. Is that correct?
That would be correct. Based off of our projections, as approved by the Maryland State Department of Planning, we're two hundred and fifty-two children short of that projection. So we would have to, we would have to alter our projections.
You're going to have to draw it out for me somehow, because I don't understand how if we leave Sharpsburg alone, and there's two hundred and fifty-two kids in that school, how having those children in that school somehow counts against our ability to get state funding. I mean, maybe I'm the only one who doesn't get it, but.
No, it doesn't.
You have this pot you're trying to fill up. When you're at Sharpsburg, it's already filled up with two hundred and fifty-two students right out of the blocks.
I understand, I understand that.
If you shift, if you close Sharpsburg, you start filling up the South County pot with two hundred and fifty-two. If you don't close Sharpsburg, you start at zero.
I understand.
For South County, zero. So.
And then I have to show enough growth throughout that area to fill that school.
Not only.
And the same thing's true of, I mean, any more than Pleasant Valley's kids somehow count against us, right? I mean, they don't count against us if we were to try to pursue that second scenario where we leave the two schools alone.
They're counted in this whole mix, and actually, they're helping us because Pleasant Valley's over. Now, the other part of that is, we need West, we need Rockland Woods to fill as well, because that seat capacity, those empty seats over there are pulling out of our ability to request state funding unless they fill up as well.
So, boy, let me ask it a different way. If we decided to close Boonsborough Elementary, how many kids are on the Boonsborough campus right now?
Shy of six hundred, I think.
Five hundred and fifty-six.
So if we closed Boonsborough and redistributed the Boonsborough kids throughout the contiguous schools, it would make a lot of people mad, but let's just say we did it for this example. We put those kids in everywhere, would be almost over, would be filled everywhere, would be overcapacity, and then we would need a new school if we closed Boonsborough, right? Because we haven't done anything to Sharpsburg, it's still sitting there with its two hundred and fifty kids. And let's just say for sake of argument that we comfortably seeded two hundred of the five hundred and fifty kids in schools that had capacity. So now we need a school that would take three hundred-plus kids, the Boonsborough kids that didn't have a school to go to. And we could then look at our projection that might say we've got another hundred kids coming to the neighborhood, so we could, could we then get full state funding to house those Boonsborough kids and this projected group of kids?
Not at four seventy-one. If you're two hundred plus a hundred, the state would participate in three hundred seats of whatever size school you built. If you don't build a three hundred-seat school, they would participate a hundred percent.
So you've got the three hundred kids that need a school. So you've got the 300 kids that need a school. You've got some kids that we project are going to be here within the seven years, so they will let you size to that. So let's just say it's 100 kids. So now, we could build a school that would seat 400 folks.
That's correct.
I mean, that's right, right?
That's correct.
So I want to come back now to if we closed Sharpsburg and moved the Sharpsburg kids to schools where we had capacity. Do you see where I'm going with this at all? Because what I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to show is that, wow, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to show is the kids only count once.
Correct.
And this board has the ability to say to us as a staff planning team, "We want you to close X in order to build Y." So if you want to close Boonsborough to build, Boonsborough Elementary School to build a new school on a property yet undefined, we could do that. We could do that. Or we could simply say we're going to leave the status quo. So I mean, that, I think that's what we're looking for from the board is some direction. We're giving you what we think is our best recommendation and that is to build Sharpsburg. And there's some other thinking that goes behind it. We're logically driven by numbers here, but there's something else at stake. And I think that most of you at least would appreciate this on some level. If you take the elementary school out of Sharpsburg, you necessarily kill Sharpsburg. It is the only viable big activity that where kids and people gather. So I think that informs some of our decision as well, is that we would like to have something in Sharpsburg as a community. But we'll be guided by this board. If you tell us to close something, we will close it. We'll ask you to come with us when we announce it. But we would do that.
I feel like I failed as a teacher here somehow, but you know, I'd like to have one more shadow to what meant. If you take one school or 10 schools, you take the total state rate of capacity of all those schools. You take all the children you have there and you project, whether it's gone up, down, flat, whatever it is. And you, let's assume it's gone up and it's going to exceed that total pie of all the schools added up. And you subtract out your projected number, you end up with some delta. That delta is what the state will pay for in regards to additional seat capacity. What makes Sharpsburg a little bit different is they're willing, they would be willing to do Sharpsburg based on condition. Not to cloud the issue of Boonsborough, they probably would say, "Do a feasibility study." "No, you can't close Boonsborough Elementary. It's in too good a shape."
I think Boyd, where the people are getting lost is that in the example that I used, if you closed Boonsborough and you redistributed some kids, you said, "We could build a new school for the kids that have been displaced."
So in our big picture of all the state rate of capacities added together, when you close Boonsborough, you just wiped out 500 seats. So now we have 500 seats to work with.
I get, I get that. But it doesn't appear in your scenario that the same logic applies to Sharpsburg. Because if you-
It's exactly the same. Exactly the same. So if we have 1,000 SRC, state rate of capacity between five schools, just to make it easy, 1,000. If I have Sharpsburg, there's 250 kids.
I think we all, I think we all get that, but I think what you said to Dr. Harding's is those 250 kids count against you if they're still sitting there. And they would, if they're still sitting at Sharpsburg, they don't count against you because they have a home. They have a place.
700, 1,000 SRC, 1,000 SRC among all the schools. That's the wrong number, but just trying to make it simplistic. If Sharpsburg's there, if Sharpsburg's eliminated, now my SRC just went collectively among a variety of schools to 750. And like, maybe I still have 1,000 children. If Sharpsburg is still there, my SRC is still 1,000 that I'm working with. And now I have to get above that in order to start getting state funding. I need, I need a board somewhere to start writing on. I apologize. I can't explain it better.
Are there other questions or discussion? Mrs. Bright?
I'm sorry, I'm going to keep at this. When the school board and the county funded Rockland, there, that funding was based on projections of development growth on Sharpsburg Pike. How did we get, or what percentage of state money did we get for Rockland? I don't recall. Because that was based on projections. And you're saying that those projections at that point said that a school in Westfields would be filled in seven years? Is that how we got the state money?
That's correct. And/or the surrounding schools. You can leave the surrounding schools overcapacity. Nothing requires you to move the children in there.
So to justify Rockland, we didn't have to go out to other tiers and say we could redistrict?
Yes.
To justify the money?
We had to go out and look at all the surrounding districts and what capacity they had available as well. Sharpsburg being one of those districts overcapacity. Boonsborough Elementary being one of those districts overcapacity. DALB at the time, I think it might have even been before we were sharing with Funkstown, so that probably been overcapacity. I'm not sure what else would have been. Williamsburg Fountain Rock. Fountain Rock pre-redistricting, so it was probably overcapacity because a couple of redistrictings ago, we lowered Fountain Rock because it was overcapacity. And we were in line with what the Maryland State Department of Planning was saying was going to happen in that area. Now, quite obviously, we didn't get all that capacity, but it was there.
We had to go back and redistrict to try to fill it.
Well, we didn't have a district that existed, so we had to redistrict just to create a boundary for it.
If you remember correctly, a lot of the recommendations that were made for, for-
Rockland.
Rockland. I was starting to say Westfield.
Some were turned down.
A lot of those recommendations were turned down. So the numbers that, it would have been a larger number.
I wasn't there at that point.
Yeah, there would have been a larger number of students at Rockland had all the recommendations of the Fiat Committee been approved. So I mean, that was part of it also. But that was, if you, if you, for those that were on the board, that was an extensive redistricting. That was probably the most difficult that we did because we didn't have an established-
I was on Fiat during that.
Didn't have an established number.
Remembering it from a different perspective. What, do I have the timing wrong?
I think you do. I'm fairly certain you were on the board when that, when those votes were cast because that's what got me involved in the board was, was the recommendation to move programs around associated with that redistricting.
For that redistricting.
Yeah, but I mean, that's neither here nor there.
I think it was right. What, what year did Rockland open, just out of curiosity?
2008.
And I came on the board in May of '07, so it was right in that transition.
Are there other questions?
I have some non-South County related ones. Are we okay on time?
Sure, we've got, we still have a half hour.
Switching to Antietam Academy. I know it's a state rate of capacity of 200. How does that capacity count? Because we're, we, it's always fluid. It's, we don't know which students are coming from which schools when, how long they're going to be there. On an average day, what is the capacity, daily capacity? Any ideas?
I would have to defer, but I think they're running about 125 or plus right now. Maybe even closer to 150.
Any thought about how to use that daily capacity? Or are we just sitting there with a-
Well, a little bit, and I'm going to let Chad answer because I'm sure he'll have a better answer than I do. The state requires you to count spaces regardless of how you use spaces. But spaces over 500 square feet, they count that as a classroom. So they're calling that, you know, X number of children in there. Special ed count a little bit different. Some of the alternative schools count a little bit different. So I don't think they'll, right now, based on the challenges some of the children have, I don't think it's the desire of staff to have 200 children there or ever to have 200 children there, even though the state capacity counts up that way.
And actually, I believe it helps us a little bit, believe it or not, because we don't count the Antietam Academy state rated accounts, state rated capacity against us. The students that attend Antietam Academy are actually counted in their home schools. So they actually provide, it provides a little bit of relief to the home schools.
The wings, do we divide middle school students from senior high school students on that wing? So you would have capacity by wings rather than having one wing completely. Trying to figure out how they use the functionality of the wings and how they divide that up.
Right, right. True description. High school wing and middle school wing. Arts down one hallway, some intervention rooms, council room, things down another hallway.
Okay, we've already talked about Frederick. The Fairview Outdoor School. On the system description, and this is page 13 of Other Facilities. It's 79 if that's what you're looking for. Chapter 3, page 13. You have the emergency generator, none. Sprinkler, none. Fire alarm, not adequate, and security adequate with swipe card entry. Is there any plan to try to address some of those issues? Because again, that is sort of an isolated school. I think we are using it programmatically year-round, not every day of every week. What's the plan to kind of take care? That's a beautiful facility. It's well-loved in the community and the county. And it serves a great, it's a great asset. And it's concerning to see those emergency and security situations.
The fire alarm system needs to be upgraded. And the security system at that school is not the level of our other, other schools because it has dormitories. The classroom building is pretty much the classroom building that's been there forever. So it's not really, we don't have vestibules and that kind of thing. Best security is the isolation and the fact that we have a gate down at the end so no one can come in. With it being an overnight school, there's some alarms, some fire alarm upgrades and possibly some sprinkler upgrades. I'm not, we're not real sure if we can put sprinkler in there because of the water.
Pressure, the water pressure.
We probably need to put a storage tank in, so.
Pressure tank?
Yes. But those are all on our-
Are they on a list?
They're, they're on a list. They just haven't risen to the top yet.
Shifting to Marshall Street. I know that when we opened this building, there were 50 offices or 50 employees assigned to Marshall Street. What's happening with that space now at Marshall Street that they're no longer using?
Amy Norris is in need of some additional enclosed space. And she made a request that we visit there. Miss Robb and I and Mark and myself, we went out and visited, walked the space and looked at where she's requesting walls and some additional changes to Marshall Street to better accommodate the students. I'm not certain that we can take care of that yet, complete that yet this summer because I think it's going to require some architect and engineering design work. But that's on our radar to try to accommodate her with some additional adequate space. A bunch of their space is open. Was divided by furniture where a lot of the Burke the Five people were. So the spaces she wants to use right now will continue to be divided by furniture until we can install some additional walls.
So repurposed for use by Marshall Street.
Right. She's very excited about the opportunity to use space differently there, serve the children.
And to the Job Development Center, any suggestion on, it's still hanging out there, on reuses internally? Handing it back to the county? What, what kind of suggestions? Is any opportunity for moving this as part of a tech high project? I know they build a new house every year. Is this something, I, don't roll your eyes.
It'd be a pretty substantial project.
Is, is this something that could be used as a project? A sustainable design, possible location for a virtual high school? I, I'm just, it just seems like it's spaced there and it has a million-dollar view.
It does have a million-dollar view except for the big water tank that'd be right next door to you.
Well, that's sort of to the-
I mean, very large water tank. Right now, the site's so small and it drops off the hill and things like that. The shape of the building is, is in very poor shape. We're currently, as we talked about, using this building. We're in the process of cleaning that building out, shifting many of the materials that were stored there. We have a lot of paper storage, as in files, that need to be cap permanent files and things like that. We're going to shift to this building in conditioned space.
It should all come here for, you know.
Could I get in? Mr. Dr. Michael. We know that small enrolled schools are costly. You need your crystal ball, I guess, for this one, but Cascade is one of those. Do we have any idea of what's happening or what might happen at Cascade as far as the school system is concerned?
I guess only in that what was shared a number of years ago with the hope of developing that property. But I don't think there's been any movement, Chad, that I'm aware of.
There has not been, to my knowledge, at this point in time, other than-
Very small school, very expensive to offer.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm coming back to South County again. I, and maybe if I approach it in a different way, you can, it'll at least help me to understand. Because I, I feel like we haven't given the clarity to the people who are paying attention to this question. And I want to be sure that we try to do that.
And I do too. I feel like I failed in that, so I want to try to contribute to that.
According to our, our community analysis, two developers currently have rights for over 1,000 sewer taps in the Boonsborough area. And their current system provides the availability for a total of 1,600 sewer taps. Given what we know about the annexation that's gone on in Boonsborough, the planning, the sewer treatment facility, do we think that in the long term, and I'm not talking five or seven years, I'm talking 25 years, do we believe there will be enough students generated in the South County area to get state funding over that period of time? And I don't know when. It could be in five years, it could be in 15 years. Will there be enough students generated in that part of the county to fill the expansion of Sharpsburg that you've recommended and a new school somewhere in the Boonsborough area? Do we believe that all, that if, if those things build out, I don't know when, but I'm talking end state here, do we think there is enough capacity for that?
If those properties build out at the rate you described, yes, there would be enough capacity there to justify another school in addition to Sharpsburg.
Okay, so to my mind, what I think we need to, what I, what I'm trying to think about is what is, again, what is the end state? What, what does it have to look like in 25 or 30 years? And I don't want to make a short-sighted decision now that's going to put the system at a disadvantage in 15 or 20 years when that capacity might be needed. So if all that build-out occurs, and again, I don't know how fast it will happen. It could be, I mean, Boonsborough's projection is they're going to build 50 homes a year. They might. It could be more than that. It could be less. It's all going to depend on when this, when housing picks up at the rate that, that many people believe that it will. So a couple of things. First is, nothing that we vote on in this EFMP locks us into either choice.
Correct.
Because we really get locked into a facility's choice when we ask for local planning approval.
Correct.
And according to this plan, we don't ask for local planning approval on Sharpsburg until FY '17.
And that's correct.
So we have at least two more cracks at this before we're really locked into something.
Correct. The reason we're not asking for Sharpsburg in 2016 is the projections would not provide for that maximum state funding. So staff's still operating off the concept of maximized state funding. Where enrollment projections would be a little bit short in 2016. We maximize it based on current projections in 2017.
So if there's, if there's two messages I would like to send- So if there's, if there's two messages I would like to send, one is, and I, this is my belief, and I'm not speaking for the board, that we need both of those facilities at the capacities that you've recommended over the long term.
It would seem likely.
That's number one. Number two is, no decision that we make today or that we make when we approve this document locks us into phasing either of those. Both are still options for next year and even the following year for us to readjust depending on how quickly some of those build-outs and how those projections might change. Is that correct?
With, with one caveat, assuming land is secured. If land's not secured or delayed, that could delay when we could implement our options. If land's secured in both sites, it keeps both options open because what we'd want to do is work those through the state clearinghouse so we're ready to go with either property.
So, so what I would recommend, where I come down then on this, is for now, I'm, I'm okay with leaving this document the way it is for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think closing Sharpsburg in order to justify getting the, in order to get the numbers now to get state funding for another school in South County, while it may immediately help us build a school in South County, I think we'll pay a price in the long run because we won't ultimately have the capacity we need in twenty or twenty-five years. So that's why I won't support closing Sharpsburg to try to get the numbers to build another And given that we've got another two years to continue to monitor things, um, I think that we can continue to wait and see how the growth progresses. And the other thing that I would recommend is for us to go down that road of securing the land at both sites so that we're sure that however the phase, we know we're going to need both, so let's get the land we need to do both. We can then do the phasing as the market conditions indicate. And I think it's well-known that there's still APFO and mitigation issues in the Boonesboro area for the developers who plan to build all these homes. So I would encourage the county with, you know, consultation from the school board and the school system to go down that path and deal with the mitigation and whether that looks like land or whether it looks like any other ways that mitigation could take place. I think we need to move quickly to have those conversations so that we've secured, the things that we need to have secured so that when the time comes for us to start building those schools, that we've got all the other things in place in order to do it. So, at the risk of complicating anymore, I'm going to leave it right there just to say, that's where I come down on it, having looked at the work that you've done, having gone through extensively the projections that we got from, at our last board meeting, and you know, I plugged through to look at how fast would homes have to be built in Boonesboro in order to ju, to get the numbers, to get the state funding, and you know, maybe we can get there, maybe we can't. But it seems to me we're not there yet, and let's give it another couple of years and let's be prepared so that if those numbers come in that quickly, that, that we're ready to move.
So, I, I think that's why we proposed this document as we did, is because we want to move forward on several fronts. We, we certainly want to look at what we can do in the Sharpsburg area. Board members know that, I have received some correspondence from a local developer, we are having those conversations, and we have asked the county, who is our partner in any of these construction projects, to continue having that conversation. Those conversations are ongoing. So I, I think, you know, if there were some who think that as an administrative team we're asleep at the switch or are not aware of what's happening demographically in the county, they should know that we not only spend some part of every day thinking about this stuff, but we also have moved aggressively forward to get some questions answered. So I, I think Dr. Harding, you can rest assured that that's exactly where staff will be, is we want to maximize state participation, we want our partners involved, and we clearly know that in order to do any of the things that are anticipated for Washington County in the future, we have to have land.
Don?
Mrs. Breivik.
Um, and I'm okay with everything, more than okay. I think it makes a very logical explanation of the process, and I appreciate that. I guess what my personal concern is, and I know we can't push the county, uh, and I know Dr. Wilcox, we're partnering with them, but do you have any idea of what you would think the timeline or the, the mitigation process? I, I think there is a site selection evaluation that's still in the mix somewhere. How do all these pieces come together for the various communities to, to understand?
Well, I, I think it's, it's, it's fair for me to offer that we are further down the road in the acquisition of some buildable land in the Sharpsburg area than we are in South County. It's, it's fair to say that. But part of that is because we are waiting on a study that looks at potential school sites. I will make sure that one of the first things I do tomorrow, if not later today, is call Mr. Murray and tell him how important that study is to us, and we'll ask them to accelerate their process on both fronts.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Could I have one small school question to, to Mr. Bailey's question about Cascade? We have another small school, the Hancock Community School. Have we thought about ways of signature for that school, an open enrollment opportunity to encourage people to, I know there's sixteen miles between Clear Spring and Hancock on seventy or whatever, but is there some thought about how to encourage enrollment? Because again, like Sharpsburg, Hancock, that is their community, that's, and we're all about building communities. How do we help that community retain a, a vibrant school?
Well, I, I think our tuition plan with our neighbor was a good way.
Yeah.
No.
I wasn't going to go there, but.
Well, I, I will tell you, one of the things I think is really exciting is right now, some of the advanced math courses are being taught because they've been taught virtually, or I guess in a kind of a two-way interactive way between Clear Springs calculus class and the Hancock kids. I think there are four kids at Hancock who wanted to take calculus, we couldn't justify sending a teacher, so we provided a two-way communication link that's been actually very, very successful. We're looking to expand it to other areas. That keeps the Hancock community vibrant in the sense that their kids can take the kind of courses that they want. There's a certified teacher of record who's teaching the class, the kids can interact. If you have seen the latest issue of What's Up Doc, it was actually the kids that brought up how successful that was. The principals wanted to know if the interaction between the kids was different in the class where the teacher of record was actually teaching and reversed, so they flipped all the technology around and taught the class backwards, which means that the teacher was, the course originated at Hancock and came back to Clear Spring, and the results were still the same. The kids were actively engaged, the kids drove the learning in, in a way that I think has surprised everybody, so.
It's a good story. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any board members want to seek consensus on any changes to the document before it's presented on June third? And you, you're saying it goes to FIAC next?
Yeah, it's actually, our draft has already been sent to the Facility Enrollment Advisory Committee for their review, just as we did last year. We'll take the comments from this meeting, I'll present that to the committee at the meeting, and then we'll hopefully come back with a recommendation to the board from the FIAC in conjunction then at the June third meeting, so.
Great.
But they have this current document as it sits there.
All right. When is that meeting?
Uh, the twenty-seventh, sixteenth.
I'm not sure we want to tell you, Mrs. Breivik. Just kidding.
You're bad.
We want you there.
Okay, if there's no, no desire on any board members to seek consensus on any changes, we'll thank staff very much for a good discussion, educational discussion, we appreciate it, and we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.
Sounds good. Until our next meeting.
Now that.